To conduct public meetings over the internet during the time of emergency. All the public buildings in Needham are closed, so we have no choice if we're going to get things done. We need to do it this way. Um, since this is our first time, you all saw we have Roger here to help us, but be patient. Uh, if we have technical problems. I guess I also want to say right up front that if for some reason we can't complete the meeting or internet goes or whatever. All matters that are not resolved are continued until the next hearing on April 30th. Um, I guess I'm supposed to also announce that this is recorded and if all the technology works, it's also being broadcast on the Needham channel. So that we maybe have a large audience. Um. We already talked about asking everyone to be muted and when we get to calling on people, we're going to ask you to use the function that is an electronic raising your hand and Ro- Roger, could you explain to people where that is?
Um, if you are an attendee, um, it's right, uh, if you're, if you're using your desktop, you're an attendee, it's actually at the bottom of the list of attendees. And if you're using your phone, it's, uh, right at the bottom of the screen. So sometimes depending upon what your phone is, if it's whether it's an iPhone or an Android device, uh, you may just have to tap the bottom of the screen and it'll show up. There'll be a little hand, an actual hand, you just tap it and it goes, it'll turn blue. For us over here, we'll see it and for the panelists, I believe it's actually under, um, more down underneath there. I've, uh, I've been a panelist, so for as panelists go, it's down there as well.
If you click, if I click on participants, I get the list of all participants in the electronic razor here.
Yep, yep. So that's where it will show up. Alright.
Alright, so why don't we start with a roll call of the board? So in case there's any confusion, people know who's on the board. So, uh, say present or hello, Mr. Tamkin.
Present.
And Mr. Goldman. Unmute.
Uh, Howard Goldman is present.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Friedenberg. I see your lips moving and Miss Parody.
Present.
Alright, and then I think all of you know Daphne Collins, our staff person, who's also here. Um, so the first matter that we need to deal with are the minutes of the last meeting. And, uh, unless there's a proposed amendment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Mr. Goldman.
Uh, yeah, try to find my mute button, uh, second that motion.
Alright, all in favor, alright, I guess we have to do all votes by roll call, Mr. Tamkin.
Aye.
Mr. Goldman.
Aye.
And I'm in favor, so the minutes are approved. Alright, so, um, we'll now proceed with the formal agenda and the way I'm going to proceed is I'll read the notice of the meeting. We'll then recognize the applicant to make a presentation. And when that presentation is done, I'll read into the record the comments we've received from town officials and outsiders. Uh, and then we'll open it up to the public if there's anyone present, uh, who wants to speak. And then finally we'll deliberate and hopefully vote. So let me start by calling the first matter, which is 217 High Rock. Public notice is hereby given that Wesley and Suzanne Wildman owners made application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to permit an additional garage space. The relief sought is associated with the addition of two new garages and a screened in porch living area in the rear of this existing single family house with an attached single garage. Property is located at 217 High Rock Street in Needham in the single residence B district. And on this, is it Mr. Ruffo?
Yes.
Alright, so why don't you explain to the board and to anyone who's listening in what it is that you want to do?
Um, good evening, everybody. My name is John Ruffo and I live at 33 Emerson Place, which is actually in the neighborhood where this project is being proposed. Uh, I'm a registered architect in Massachusetts and, um, I'm a principal at Forman Place, which is an architectural firm based in, uh, based in Newton, Massachusetts. Um, I would like to share my screen and just take you, um, as expediently as I can through the design, which I think you've, you've all seen, um, and explain, uh, explain the project if that's possible. If I'll, uh, I think I can just Roger, I think I can just share my screen, is that correct?
Yes, you should be able to click the share button down there and just check.
You mean, uh, Mr. Ruffo, hopefully all the board members have the plans that you submitted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very good. Looks like it's working.
It looks like it's working. Okay, great. I'm glad I could see that. So this is an existing conditions, um, survey of the drawing of the parcel. And to get oriented, this is High Rock Street here. North is up on the plan. The existing, uh, footprint of the building of the existing, um, house is here. The driveway there, um, a deck that wraps around back, uh, sort of a stone, crushed stone path here. And then the yard, you know, extends out this way, all the lots on the street are these very kind of long linear lots. Um, so abutting, uh, properties, uh, to the right and left. And then the Emerson Place neighborhood, um, which is mentioned, I think in two of the letters, um, is kind of here, the cul-de-sac is sort of off to the right. If you can, everyone's seeing my cursor, I'm assuming, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the existing conditions of the parcel. Um, and the parcel is, you can see up here, uh, 15,890 square feet. So I'm, I'm actually going to jump down to a plan that is, um, the architectural plan is to first sort of explain the layout and then, um, back to the site plan and especially the drainage plan. So, uh, the plan on the right is really a basement level floor plan. The plan on the left is the first floor plan where you enter the home currently, uh, right off of, of, uh, High Rock. So again, High Rock is here, the driveway. This is the first floor of the house. And what's being proposed and what you want to, what you want to pay attention to graphically is this gray area that sort of makes its way around the back of the house. That's the proposed new driveway or additional driveway space that brings you from the front of the house down into the back of the house, right? So on the basement level, if you think about, and you come down toward the back of the house, this is where the two new garage spaces are. On the existing house up on the street level, there's one kind of narrow garage bay here today, right? So this would allow someone to come home, come down and pull in to the garage at the lower level here. Okay, the plan also calls for above the garage. What we'll actually end up doing is taking the existing deck off and rebuilding it. If you remember from the floor plan, there's a wraparound deck today, um, which you can see in a photograph in a moment. And then above the garage is a new sitting room that's here, which you'll see three dimensionally in a moment. And a new deck area, all of this is happening right above the garage, which is aligned on this plan here. So garage below with two bays and, uh, deck and new sitting room above. And then the lawn in the back of the, um, house is higher. So there's, um, a patio here, which may end up being bluestone. And then the path that runs alongside of the house today will be extended down to connect the back lawn, uh, to the front of the house. Um, is everything kind of clear on that? Am I going too fast or does it feel like it's, okay? Okay, I'm seeing some nods, so that's good. Um, the back of the house today where the addition is being proposed, um, looks like this really. Um, so you're looking back toward High Rock, so High Rock is running beyond the house here. Um, the area where we're talking about the driveway being added is right in this area of lawn that's here. And then, um, the garage that's being, um, proposed would be sort of in this area. And then the new sitting room would be in this area here, right? So if I go down to this, which is a three dimensional model of the, of the building or the proposed building, when you see this peak of the roof here, right, that's, that's this peak of the roof here. So that all sort of stays intact. And the bay window that wraps around this way, basically everything on this side of the house is existing. And the addition that's being proposed is red here. So this is the proposed living area. Um, and this is the proposed garage with the deck and stairs down to the patio here. Okay, so that's the general orientation of the, I would say, the architectural proposal in the project. Uh, let me go up then to the site plan, which is also, as you can see, it's labeled the proposed grading and drainage plan. And I'll zoom in to that plan a little bit so you can understand it better. On the left is a bunch of technical information about the actual proposed, uh, proposed drainage system. So, uh, from the outset on this project, when, uh, Wesley and Suzanne contacted me about working on it and helping them. I had done a, a project to renovate Wesley's office about four or five years ago. And so he came back and said, I'd like to do this project in the house in which we add, uh, garage, uh, two garage levels, maybe some additional living space, deck and also, um, a water drainage, uh, stormwater drainage system. Um, because we think that that's going to be, um, a required piece of the, of the puzzle. So, um, what happens in this is that the driveway is coming down from its highest elevation point here, which is very close to the street elevation point, a little bit above it. The driveway comes down to a low elevation of plus or minus 89 feet. Here, there's a catch basin and it's right there. Uh, the rest of the driveway is situated there, the catch basin then drains to, um, a secondary catch basin, basin, which is mostly there for cleaning up and into this proposed, um, discharge, uh, uh, discharge, um, system, which is sized, I'll talk about that in a moment, but it's sized for, uh, for the requirements um, to handle the, the rainwater that's required by the town. So just to understand, the water that's on this side gets kind of drained into the main system here. And there's also a new pipe on this side of the house that pulls the water, um, into the same drainage system itself. So in the, um, stormwater, uh, regulations for the town of Needham, um, the, any addition to a house that is an additional 25% to the footprint of the building, um, requires that drainage, uh, drainage system be designed and implemented. And, um, it's required that all of the impervious area that is a part of the site when the project is built, that all of that impervious area be able to handle a one inch volume across that area in a discharge system, which is, which is here on the site. So what this now does, what this proposal will do, it will take all the impervious air, impervious area, which is the driveway, the footprint of the house itself, um, and the, uh, the pathway. And there's, there's actually another document that explains a little bit more of that in detail, but it takes all of the impervious, impervious area and, um, and catches it and holds it in this system. What's required is, I think, I'm going to pull up another document if I'm able to do that. I, I assume you can see this one too. What's required through the area of, um, showing the existing impervious, you add to that the new impervious, you get a total of about 6,000 square feet of, uh, total impervious area. What's required, um, by the one inch, um, requirements of the, um, of the stormwater, um, requirements of the town is 502, um, cubic feet of storage, what's provided in the system that we've designed is 726. Um, and that happens because the system comes in these sort of add-on segments, if you will, and you can kind of just keep adding on segments until you get to the right number. So it's not custom designed to meet 502 cubic feet. It's designed to meet 726 as you add modules to this. So that just gives you a kind of a sense for the way we went through the calculation. Put it forward and that's, that's how the system was actually designed. Uh, I'm not sure that there's anything else about the drawings. Maybe, maybe people who have questions at this point about anything that they don't understand, um, the site layout and the, uh, stormwater drainage layout. I think I kind of went through everything, but I'm happy to answer questions if I've skipped anything or missed something that you're curious about, obviously.
I'll, I'll give each of the board members a chance to ask questions, but, um, if you're done, I'll maybe go through the comments that we've received.
Sure.
First of all, the planning board made no comment, but made a suggestion that you consider some kind of permeable pavers. Is that something that you've thought about and?
Um, we, we, I believe we saw that comment, uh, previously and I think it is something that we would be willing to consider. We haven't, um, actually designed anything into the system, but I could see a number of places in the plan where that would actually be really appropriate. And I can see Wesley nodding his head a little bit there, so I'm, I'm thinking that, that's, uh, it's a good idea, we'd definitely be willing to entertain that.
Um, would that affect the flow of your drainage system?
I think it would certainly have an impact on the volume that we would then have to work with. Um, I think it would, uh, you know, I'd want to talk to our civil engineer about, you know, how do you calculate the imperviousness of pervious pavers? Like, how does that actually work? Um, is it 50%? Is it 25%? Is it 80%? I don't actually know that, but, so that's something that we would want to check with our civil engineer about just how that works.
Um, I mean, I, I don't want to suggest that at this point we're imposing that as a condition. Although we're obviously very concerned that the drainage work and that the town engineer tell us it's fine. Uh, the building department, um, had no comment other than saying that you did need to have the recharge system that you've described.
Yep, okay.
And actually, we got a letter from the, um, buil- building department, the engineering department on February 5th, saying that they had reviewed the design and found it appropriate. Alright, so then, then we've received two letters and I don't know, it does not appear that these neighbors are on the meeting, but, um, Val Madden um, from 30 Emerson Place, um, wrote a letter, I, I don't know, I presume you've seen it.
Um, yep.
I don't exactly know how to understand it, uh, but she seems to be requesting that maybe you lower the elevation of the garage. Maybe you can interpret it in response.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I know, I know Val Madden really well. Um, he and Nancy are two, two of our neighbors right here. And I think, um, so the two things that Val, or one of the things that I, I think he first was asking, well, how is the required calculation made? And I think we talked about that and I think the building department sort of, I think agrees with our sizing and our calculation for it, as far as I can tell. So that was the first point that he made. His second point, uh, had to do with the potential of lowering the bottom of the catch basin or the, of the bottom of the discharge unit. So that if you imagine Wesley's property over here at 217 and Val's property over here at 30 Emerson Place, um, the idea being that the average grade of Val's yard is here and the bottom in, by his calculation of the discharge unit was a little bit above that by, I think his letter said either nine inches or a foot. And so could we bring the bottom down just a little bit? Um, I think that's probably something we can do since we're in there doing a whole lot of excavation anyways, just to get these things in there. But I would also say that we should probably double check, um, the, uh, which our engineer has done a preliminary calculation by using the GIS map of Needham and verifying the datum points of which our survey was done versus the datum points in which the GIS is in Needham. And by his calculation, we're actually about nine inches lower than the average grade in Val Madden's backyard. So I think, I think it's something we can, we can handle and we can do one way or another with a minor adjustment. I think we already meet what he's asking us to do. Um, but I think either way, it's something we can work out pretty, uh, pretty easily if the project were to move forward.
Okay. Um, and then the second letter we have is from Mr. McParland at 32 Emerson Place.
Yep.
He seems pretty upset, but, you know, basically is concerned about the runoff. Do you have kind of any response to his?
I think there's three things that I'd probably want to address. One is just, there's a couple of factual items in there. One is that, um, I think he listed the front grade of 217 High Rock as being 25 feet above the typical grade in Emerson Place. And if you look at the GIS map again for Needham, uh, the elevation, uh, right at the, sort of the center line of the 217 High Rock driveway as it meets the street is listed, I think, at 168. And the average grade in that same map of the Emerson Place adjacent to it is listed at 156. So it's more approximately like about 12 to 14 feet across the front there rather than the 25 feet. So I don't know if that was a typo, but I just like factually, I think that, that's closer to a 12 foot difference. That was in the fourth paragraph in that letter. The second thing, um, is that in that letter, I think he listed me, the architect, as a direct abutter to Wesley's property at 217. I'm actually not a direct abutter. There is a yard in between my yard and Wesley's yard. So just, just for the record, I'm not actually a direct abutter. Um, so that's the second thing. The third thing is I would say just the general, I think, message in the letter was, um, that, uh, you know, the, uh, that he felt the storm system would be inadequate. Uh, the stormwater drainage system would be inadequate. But, um, I think we've, we've very closely followed the Needham regulations about stormwater. Um, I think that's been, uh, sort of looked at, uh, and, and thought through as well by the building department, if I can understand their comment. So I think that we feel really strongly that we've actually, uh, paid really close attention to what we're supposed to do. We realize the water here around Emerson Place is bad. It's difficult. My, what, my, I've been, I've had a French drain, some pump in my basement for 12 years, thank goodness. And before that, it was 10 really difficult years of owning the house without a drain system. I'm sure a lot of people can relate to that. So we're really, really aware of the issue. And, you know, in the end, what we're doing is taking 6,000 square feet of the property that currently lands and goes into the ground and isn't really held in storage in any way. We're taking that 6,000 square feet and we're putting it into a storage system that meets the Needham requirements and is in fact designed for a 25 year storm. Um, and it, it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't release it, um, until that 25 year storm is exceeded, which is, a 25 year storm is based on five and a half inches of water over a 24 hour period. Um, so we feel really good about that. And that was from the beginning, one of the design goals from, uh, from the proponent here. So, and I think that's the only things I would, I would need to address in the, uh, the letter from Mike McCarland.
Okay, then today we got a letter from Mr. Ryder, who's the assistant town engineer. I don't know if you saw that, but, um, uh, I, you know, I think he confirms that your system meets the town objectives, but he know, but noticed that there's an overflow pipe directed towards the neighboring property and says that that needs to be removed. Did you see Mr. Ryder's letter? It came late today.
Yeah, I did not see Mr. Ryder's letter, so I, I guess I'd like the chance to review that.
Okay. Um, alright, uh, unless you have something further to say, I'm going to do a roll call of the board members and ask them if they have any question.
Thanks. I don't think, unless Wesley, you think there's something else, but I don't think there's anything else for me. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Tamkin.
Um, looks like a very nice project, um, design wise. I don't really have an issue with the two additional garages or three in the location. The focus of the abutters was all directed at water and, uh, engineering that properly. Um, there's a letter from the assistant engineer you haven't seen, I haven't seen it. Uh, I heard what, uh, the chairman has paraphrased the letter of saying. Uh, and we have an issue about pavers and we have some issues on, um, perhaps changing the grade of, of some sort. So it looks like there's a little civil work to be done in completing this design. Uh, the town appears to be, uh, happy with it and appropriate, uh, with something to do with this overflow pipe being addressed. So, uh, I'm inclined to support the petition. Uh, I don't have many questions beyond that, but I think there's some civil engineering to, uh, address uh, before it's, uh, approved or it's approved conditionally on compliance with these elements.
Mr. Goldman? Uh, I, I agree with John. I think it's a well-designed. Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well-designed, uh, plan, uh, the issue is the drainage. And I, I think it's, uh, in my mind anyway, appropriate, uh, if it is to be approved, the subject to approval of the final engineering drainage plans by the town engineer. But we, we haven't delved into the, the criteria of the, of having the extra garage at 612 regarding not changing the character, doesn't appear to be changing the character or doesn't appear to have any material adverse effect. Uh, but we haven't really discussed the, the lighting, whether there's lighting that is pointed down and not glaring on the neighbors. I just would like to verify that if I could.
Uh, we haven't gotten as far as, um, as laying out the lighting. Um, at this stage, we wanted to make sure we had a way forward before we delved into more of the details of the design. Um, so, but I think we can make sure that we, you know, angle the lighting and locating the lighting in a way that it is not shining at the neighbor's houses. And I think we can, we can work quite easily to make sure that that's the case.
We would typically make that a condition of the approval and, you know, if you just use down lighting or whatever, there are a lot of ways to do it.
Sure.
So it doesn't spill over. Um, Mr. Friedenberg?
I, I have nothing to add to what John and Howard already said.
Miss Parody? Have to unmute?
Yeah, I did notice that on the attendee section that there are two people, um, that wrote the letters that are attending. So I don't know if you need to open it up to them.
Yes, we will. At this point, I was just trying to see if we had questions before we deliberate it.
Yeah.
But, 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 well, if you have nothing to add, let's, um, let me see, I guess I'm, I'm missing out. I'm looking at all of my participants. Uh, are, are either of the, uh, butters, is there anyone from the public who wants to be heard? I'm see, I'm seeing none, Roger.
Yep, I'm seeing one person. I see Val Madden and I'm going to, uh, I have a, I have a button over here that, um, I push allow to talk, so you'll see Val Madden's name show up here in just a second. Oops.
Okay, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
John, how are you?
No picture, but we can hear you. Yeah, yeah. I don't know where my camera is, but, yeah, I, um, the comments I sent in just yesterday were addressed. I would like to have a little more, uh, verification on my, the elevations, John, that you addressed. Um, to, to verify, because I, I did get the spot elevations from the town. I compared them with the, the grade lines on the plans and I just did the simple arithmetic. And I got my question answered regarding the, uh, what the requirements are for the town in terms of volume requirements of the runoff, so, uh, you know, I don't have any issues with the, with the proposed, uh, remodeling and, and, uh, any of the renovations per se, except for the fact that it is, you know, requiring quite a bit of, uh, impermeable surface, specifically the driveway. But other than that, that's all I have to say. Alright, is there, is there anyone else here that wants to say something about this? Alright, if not, then, uh, we'll close the evidence and the board can deliberate. All right, if not, then we'll close the evidence and the board can deliberate. Mr. Goldman, you?
So as I said before, I think it's a well-designed plan. The big issue is the drainage. I would like to condition it subject to the town engineer's approval of the final drainage calculations and have a provision, as we discussed just a moment ago, regarding no light spillage onto the neighbor's property. And the concept about impervious surfaces, I think everyone is in favor of it. Not quite sure how we left it. And we'll throw that back to, to the board to discuss about how to request the, the usage of pervious surfaces where appropriate.
Mr. Tamkin?
I have no other comments on the substance of the application. I would vote in support of it. I just don't know what the changes in the drainage will be with respect to pavers and where the pavers are. And I guess the town has already approved the current plan with the removal of this pipe. What, what is the pipe that, do you have any idea what is being addressed, Mr. Ruffo?
I, I don't have a, not being a hydraulic, hydrology engineer, civil engineer, I don't have a total sense for what the pipe is used for and what conditions. My sense is that the volume of this thing is, again, it's designed for a 25 year storm and it actually exceeds that. And that at some point, if it's completely full, it has, it has a, you know, it has an overflow pipe like a roof drain does and that kind of thing. So I, I, I think if we were to propose removing it, it's the kind of thing I've got to go back to our civil engineer and say, okay, so what does this mean to remove the overflow pipe? What does it do to the system? Is there a secondary system that needs to be added? And I don't know the answer to that.
So, so I guess for the pavers. And if this is. Are we making that a requirement of the permit?
I wouldn't think we're making the pavers a requirement. I think it was simply a suggestion that came from the planning board to consider it. And I think Mr. Ruffo said he's going to consider it. And as far as I'm concerned, if the engineering department finds that the, the recovery system is sufficient with a paved driveway, I'm okay with that if that's what the applicant wants to do.
Then I have no other comments and I'm supportive of the application as presented subject.
And Mr. Friedenberg?
I, I have no other comments and I would also be in support, subject to the conditions that you've mentioned.
And Ms. Parity?
I'm saying nothing to add and in support of it, with the conditions that were requested.
So can I ask Mr. Goldman to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the applicant's petition for a special permit under sections 6.12 and 7.5, 7.52, to permit an additional garage space, which would include a screen in porch and living area in the rear of the existing single family house with an attached single family garage be approved, subject to approval of the final drainage plans by the town engineer and that no light spillage be permitted in the, the new driveway area.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so this is a little confusing, but there are only three of us that vote and that will be Mr. Goldman, Mr. Tamkin and myself. So we have a motion that's been seconded. I guess I should call the roll. All in favor, Mr. Goldman? Are you in favor, the motion?
In favor.
Mr. Tamkin?
I'm in favor.
In favor.
And I'm in favor, so the motion passes. So, Mr. Ruffo, you have some more engineering to do and a final approval from the engineering department. We have to write up a decision that, you know, will take us probably three weeks by the time we circulate it and get it signed, but we'll get that in motion.
Right. And we're somehow notified as soon as the decision is ready so that we can see, is it sent to us?
Yeah, Ms. Collins will mail it to you when it's recorded with the town clerk.
Okay, great.
And it, it actually a little more complicated. After it's recorded, you have to wait 20 days.
Right, for appeal.
But, you know, again, often the building inspector will let you start the construction with the understanding that if something, if there were an appeal or something happens, that you'd have to just stay with two garages. But, you know, if you're anxious to get going, you could talk to the building inspector. He may let you pull a building permit.
Right. But the, the letter that we received is actually spells out all the conditions that we just talked about. So we can just kind of go through them. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Ruffo, I'll be in contact with you throughout the process and let you know. And I will get you all your materials. And as soon as it's filed, you will get an electronic copy as well as a mailed copy.
Great, thank you, definitely. Appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
So I think we've reached eight o'clock. And so we have no, I can proceed with the 7:45 and eight o'clock matter. The 7:45 matter is 123 Pickering Street. I need to call it and that it will be continued. So to read the notice, Jay Durenzo Properties LLC applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 1.4.7.4, 3.2, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to permit the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement and reconstruction of the lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to be replaced by a new two-family structure. The property is located at 123 Pickering Street in Needham in the single residence B district. This was originally heard on February 13th, continued until the day. The applicant has due counsel. Due counsel needs to get access to town records in order to explore further the history of the use of the property. So they've asked for a continuance. And in the absence of objection, I'll simply continue this to the April 30th hearing. Hearing no objection, I'll proceed to the case number three, which is 350 Cedar Street. ATC Watertown LLC applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 6.7.5, 6.7.7B, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to permit the installation of an 80 kilowatt shared industrial diesel-powered emergency generator with a concrete pad and bollards. The generator is to provide backup power for existing and future wireless communication tenants. Property is located at 350 Cedar Street in Needham in the single residence B district. I take it, Mr. Dangora, you're on this now?
I am, yes.
All right, so we've seen a few of these before, but why don't you take us through this installation?
Great, thank you. Again, my name is Michael Dangora. I work for Network Building and Consulting. We have an office in Charleston, Massachusetts. The application was filed by attorney Marty Cohen, who works for Network Building and Consulting. He's handled a few of these for us in the past. But I have been asked to, to cover the, the meeting this evening. So his application provides a pretty good narrative, addresses all the requirements on the zoning bylaw 6.7, the wireless communications facilities by law. So what I'm going to do is just try to provide a, a brief overview to this rather than hitting all of his, his points he makes within the application. So as you mentioned, this is a application submitted by ATC Watertown LLC for the installation of a shared generator at the existing telecommunications tower facility located 350 Cedar Street. The anchor tenant is T-Mobile and this installation is part of T-Mobile's hardening project in which generators are being placed and installed at various locations, really as emergency backup power. And the generator will also be used at this site, be made available, I should say, to existing and future wireless communications tenants. So Network Building and Consulting applied for and secured a, an approval by the Design Review Board about a year ago, back in March 2019, to construct and operate the proposed generator. Subsequently, the, the building permit, the building permit application was submitted, but was denied by the building commissioner who directed us to apply for a special permit. One thing that attorney Cohen does submit in his letter is reference to the eligible facilities requests in which the applicant here feels as though this falls under. So the locust, the locust is a 43.5 acre parcel located, as mentioned, in the single residential B district. The project does not affect any other equipment on the site, including the tower dimensions. The generator's proposed placement is within the existing fenced compound. It meets all setback requirements per zoning by law. The proposed location is well-screamed by existing vegetation and will not require major topographic changes or tree removal at the sites. A specifications apart are provided as part of this application and it is designed obviously to operate in conformance with all the state and federal standards. To let you know that the generator will be tested once a month, only during daytime hours. And it's for a 30 minute period. Anytime the, the generator runs, it's always maximum tilt. So any, any measurements that are done, and I'll expand on that a little bit further as we get to any noise emissions, it's when the generator is running full tilt, which is the way it's always operated. The distance to the nearest residence also provided in the application is 536 feet away. That was generated and provided by using Google Earth software. Now, exhibit six takes on, as I mentioned, the acoustic emissions here. The calculations, as you see on this, in this section of the application, derived is derived, always called an inverse square law calculator, basically what's used to, to measure the sound decibels. And what happens here is they take the distance from the nearest residence and they input it into the formula, which can be found on, online, it's under the engineering toolbox. Basically what engineers use is formula. And they calculate the distance, they calculate the decimal sound pressure level based upon the distance from generator to the nearest residence. In this instance, the formula generates a 57.65 decibel sound pressure level. And this equates to a conversation in a restaurant office or, or background music. Other than that, at this point, I don't have any other further information and certainly will, will answer any questions it even has.
Right, in the previous approvals, we've required the testing be done during business hours. And as requested by the building commissioner, we've asked for a actual test be done and submitted after the installation is in and operating to confirm the sound level. I presume you have no problems with.
No problem at all, no.
All right, so does anyone on the board have a question? Mr. Tamkin?
I have no questions on the application.
Mr. Goldman?
I think you've done a nice job to deal with the, the issue that comes up frequently, which is the noise. And I think you've got, you brought us to exhibit six. And you, and John, the chairman has highlighted the testing be done that monthly during business hours and that as he talked that to submit a, a test certification of the system when actually put into use is also required. So otherwise, I think it's a thorough report.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedenberg?
No, I have no questions.
Ms. Parity?
Questions for me.
All right, so Mr. Goldman, you want to make a motion?
Okay.
Your motion.
Thank you. Move that the applicant's petition for a special permit under sections 6.7.5, 6.7.7B, and 7.5.2, to permit the installation of an 80 kilowatt shared industrial diesel-powered emergency generator with a concrete pad and bollards be approved with the proviso that the testing of the system be done during normal business hours and that the applicant submit a certification discussing the sound emitted by the system and is actually put into practice, actually put into use.
Second that, Mr.?
I, I would just clarify that you're asking for a report to be done and a sound study to be submitted based upon that to the building inspector?
Yes.
All right, based upon that, I'll second the motion.
All right, so Ms. Collins? You're muted.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. And all your previous generators, you also added the proviso that if there were any residential complaints, that it would go to the building commissioner and a test would be done. You know, they wouldn't have to mitigate any concerns and then a test would be done based on any complaints. And that has been a traditional condition in all your previous generators.
So, Mr. Little, do your motion?
I think it's a great suggestion. Thank you, and I adopt that amendment.
And I will second the amended motion.
All right, then I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Tamkin?
Yes.
Mr. Goldman?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So we're approved. We need to write up the decision. So, Mr. Goldman, would you like to do the garage or the, or the battery installation?
The battery power backup, that's my specialty. I'll take this last one, thank you.
Mr. Tamkin, will you do the garage?
I love garages.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
And, and thank you, Roger. I think this, this went surprisingly well.
Yeah.
I shocked myself that we could do it.
You all did a great job. It was really good. I appreciate all your patience and everything, too. It's all been a crazy, crazy bit for all of us on the town side, trying to make sure that we can get everything up and going. But if you have any comments or anything about it, please don't hesitate to send anything to me. This was really, I think, my first, my first one of these, so as an attendee kind of.
Thank you for it. Everybody stay healthy.
All right.
Yes.
So, Mr. Ms. Collins, do we have anything else that we need to deal with?
No, the next meeting is April 30th and it will be in a Zoom format.
Are we gone?
Is that a Thursday?
He's left.
April 30th, 30th of Thursday?
Yes, it's a Thursday.
Okay, so that's, that's our next meeting and that presumably will be on Zoom in light of the continuing distances, regulations. It may be a bit more complicated than this one. We'll get better as we go along. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, now.